Motion to reconvene the regular meeting of the Board of Education in open session.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Hi, sir.
Hi.
Richter.
Hi.
Leview.
Hi.
Huff.
Hi.
Dernbeck.
Hi.
Brown.
Hi. Okay, if anybody would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
United States of America. And kind of before we get started, we've got some recognitions and service committee. The first comes from IASB, our Association of School Board, which is recognizing members who have put in a lot of service and years of service as school board members. So it's wonderful seeing some of our dedicated school board members recognized by the Illinois Association of School Boards, IASB through the Board's Leadership Recognition Program. The reward reflects hard work, commitment, significant contributions that these board members have made for our students and our community. So with that, Mr. Dernbeck and Mr. Richter, if you could take your awards. Thank you. Also, we're giving the award, but she's not here tonight, so we'll give the award to her next time she's here. Next is a recognition honor for a school board member who's leaving the board, I think. So just want to say we're here today to celebrate a remarkable person and impactful career spanning thirty-four years. It all began in eighty-seven, when Steve was first hired as a teacher at O'Fallon. If you think about it, Ronald Reagan was in office and stood in West Berlin talking to the Gorbachev to tear down the wall that year. So since that time, a lot's happened, much has changed, but Steve's dedication to education and our community's children has been unwavering dedication and passion. We've witnessed Steve's commitment in several of his roles as a teacher. Steve had an knack for simplifying complex topics and making them seem easy. As one of Steve's geometry students in ninety-three, I received building blocks needed to tackle physics and later a degree of mechanical and aerospace engineering. So thanks, Steve. Steve was inspired others as a coach, where he instilled teamwork, discipline, hard work, and the importance of maintaining a positive spirit. As a principal, Steve led the district with genuine care for both students and staff. And as a school board member, Steve consistently championed the needs of our school and our students while teaching or acting as our board historian during numerous discussions. So, but what stands out the most for Steve is his genuine heart. Steve cares deeply about people, and it's shown in every role that you've had here. So while we'll certainly miss Steve's presence on our board, we know that it's time for him to dedicate his time and energy to his passions and family. Steve, thank you for your incredible service, leadership, and friendship. I wish you all the best. And for the last time, are you sure you don't want to go another year?
There's a lot to do, but as my wife reminded me the other day, and there will be a lot to do two years from now, four years. So yes, I'm sure. So that's anyway.
All right, the door's still open. Are there any other board members who would like to say any words?
I'd like to say something. I have thoroughly enjoyed working with Steve. He has been just a great role model as far as a board member is concerned. One of the best I've been associated with in my twenty-four years serving school boards. And the thing I really, I'm really going to miss about Steve is watching Steve during board meetings. I've been fortunate enough to sit opposite of Steve, and I enjoy observing him. And Steve just sits there quietly, takes it all in, and then at the end, he speaks his mind as far as what his position is on some very difficult positions. And if he doesn't speak up, I'll put him on the spot, and I'll say, I want to hear what Steve has to say about this. So he has truly been a great asset to the district and will be missed.
Thanks, Steve.
So.
Any others?
Yeah. Steve, I just wanted to thank you and be able to serve with you. I just, whenever, I was trying to think what to say and how you made me feel on the board, and I feel grounded when you give your feedback and when you talk to the board. I feel grounded in the history of this institution. I feel grounded in your compassion for education. I feel grounded in your kindness and your love for other people. And it makes me want to be grounded too, because you know sometimes I'm not always grounded in our conversations. And it makes me want to be like that. So thank you for being the role model, for teaching me some lessons about how to be a great board member. Just want to say thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
So in addition to being a historian, a friend, and a role model, I did appreciate your, the unique perspective that you brought. I mean, we all come in with our perspective, but you especially brought the perspective of being a teacher, being the principal, almost the inside baseball there. So I did appreciate that, and I did appreciate the history too. You're just a wealth of information and been here long enough to teach Rob. You've been here a long time. And you survived Rob. That's another thing.
I lay hair over here because of Rob and his brother.
But we'll miss you, and I think that, you know, the fact that the board does, we do get along, we do listen to other perspectives. I think that's a lot to do with those board members you are on, and the fact that you are very welcoming and open to conversation and bringing those perspectives in and listening. So that's how I learned how to be a board member. I haven't been as long as some of these others, but it is, it is a lot, there's a lot there, and there's true, the dedication to the school and to the community, to the kids and the teachers and administrators. And just thank you for all that you have given.
Thank you, Mr. Hightree.
We're going to keep you a role model now.
Yeah. Steve, I'd like to thank you for your warm welcome, being a new board member. Definitely was greatly appreciated. Wasn't quite sure what I was stepping into. You definitely provided a lot of insight with your many years of experience. Was it eighty-seven?
I started here in eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven. That's the year I was born.
I'd like to tell you I was a new teacher then, but I wasn't.
That's a lot of experience, and like I said, I definitely appreciate it all, because you just provided me a lot of insight and regards to things that have transpired over the years. And also just a little bit of the direction that we're going. It's good to know that, you know, though we're moving in a certain direction, some of the things that we're dealing with, they're not foreign, just things we're going to continue to try to work towards to get better. So I definitely appreciate all the encouragement and your diligence and just lead us by example for someone who, you know, desires a certain community, you know, of what it looks like.
All right, and we do have one more. She's not here, but coming to you from Jazz Festival in Animal City. She wanted me to say a few words for you. So I'm Donna. Steve, for the past ten years, you've been more than just a fellow board member. You've been my neighbor at the table and an OTHS historian. Your knowledge and memory of the district has been invaluable. You've also been the acting secretary when I couldn't be in a meeting, our driver to the train station for IASB conferences, and countless district meetings, always there to provide support where you could. I'm honestly going to miss hearing you say, "This old man's been around for a while," and probably point out staff and parents you once taught or hired as principal. Not to mention your yearly Christmas cookies, seeing the different handmade animal ornaments and that you make every year. And the stories, always the stories about your grandkids, Kate, your daughter, your dad, the rest of your family, and let's not forget about your hard-working days on the golf course. Over these years, I've come to truly know you not as a board member, but as a friend, and it's been an absolute pleasure and privilege. Your wisdom and kindness, you meant a lot to me. And while I truly can't imagine board meetings without you sitting by my left side, I know your presence, your impact, and your legacy will be felt at OTHS for a long time. So thank you, Steve, for everything you've done for OTHS, this community, and for me. You will be missed more than words can say. All right, so with that, will you step up? We've got some other work for you. So, I see there's one. Also, so first is a commemorative award for your living room. We've got a brick on order for you in front of the school. We have a picture of you coming for the thirty-plus-year service award in front of the building. So thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to say a few words to your audience?
Well, I don't really. Do we have kids who are out there tonight?
We don't.
No students who are out there tonight?
You're the one we're honoring tonight.
No, no, it's supposed to be for students. This is, I just want to say thank you to my fellow board members. It is a privilege to work with people whose goal is just to see that this school continues to get better and better every day. They don't come with agendas. They don't want to see anybody fired. They don't want to see some friend hired. We just want to do what's best for kids. That has always been my goal as a teacher, as an administrator, and as a board member. We do what's best for our students, and as long as we keep that in mind, we were elected to represent our community. We have by far the best public high school south of Interstate eighty, I believe, and also maybe the largest south of I-80 for that matter. And it has been an honor to serve with all of you for however many years, whether it's just a few months or for all twelve years I've been on the board. Thank you. There's another former student over there. He was on the student council when I was an assistant principal. So it has been a thrill. I have really led a really lucky life. I spent thirty-four years as a teacher, administrator, coach. I never went to work. I went to school. And when I retired, I needed to continue to serve. But at seventy-two years old now, thanks for reminding me that you were born here. I can't hear. And, but I still am, I am privileged, because in this community, I run into former students all the time. It is always a good experience. And so thank you all, and I'm going to miss you all. I would like to stay around, but I know that my grandkids need me some more, my golf game needs more improvement. I was not very good today. And I'm going to miss this, but I need to spend more time with them. My wife needs more care after her knee replacement. I will spend some more time with my dad. My ninety-three-year-old father is still with us. And a week and a half ago, my two sisters, who are both nurses, told me Dad has between a day and a week to live. They said that to me just before Christmas of 2023, and he's still with us. I'm going to go babysit tomorrow night. He is not able to take care of himself anymore, but he lives with my sister, and I'm going to give her a little bit of a break. I will cherish every minute of that like I've cherished every minute I've been here. So thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
Graduation picture.
Okay, I need to teach you. We're in the middle. We're in the middle.
One, two, three. All right. Four, two. One, two, three. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
So with that, our agenda for tonight, we've got quite a bit to go through. Energy assessment, facility planning with Dr. Shackelford. Mr. Graham's going to cover grants. We've got an update on the CTE DODIA for Ms. Queensland. We'll talk a little bit about our recent best retreat. There's some discussion around some school fees for twenty-five, twenty-six school year. An MOU we're reviewing, an update to our calendar, and an overview of our health insurance. So with that, let's start with the administrative reports. Dr. Shackelford?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to start tonight with an energy assessment. So when we had our board retreat this past spring, we dug in a little bit more to our facilities needs, and energy's a big piece of that. We've been talking about green initiatives for several years, and now we have an opportunity to explore that more. So we did have an energy assessment completed. The first item there is our lighting, which the great news is, is we have a great maintenance specialist here, A.J. Martin, who has been slowly replacing all of our lights on both campuses and continues to do so. That's a pretty heavy lift, and we'll be completing those hopefully over this summer and into next year. Our HVAC, of course, seems almost every board meeting. We are either working towards starting a new HVAC project, completing one, or making progress. We just had some installed over this past spring. Of course, the largest one was in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, when we had the replacements over at Milburn. Those continue as well. And then the biggest finding, I guess, would be our Milburn Building Automation System. So we have all this new HVAC over at the Milburn campus, and it's functioning properly. However, there's an automation system for our HVAC to work, which is circa 2009, when the building opened. So the aging components of that system are problematic. So now, if something goes down at the Milburn campus, it's able to be fixed and repaired by our HVAC specialist, Greg Brown. However, a better, more updated system would serve us well. So, for example, I have some things listed there in our current system. Our controllers are outdated. It's causing failures that can be fixed, but then repeat fail. The operation itself isn't inefficient, again, when you're looking at now over fifteen years aged on those. And then also, there's no visibility of the current space temperature. If you're in the classrooms there, they have a dial where you can dial just a couple degrees, but you don't have an idea of what those couple degrees actually are outside of your general field. So in the future, recommendation would be for us to upgrade or replace that existing system. It's time for that, and then also to optimize the sequence of operation, have schedules, set points, again, just so it's running more efficiently. We've discussed before that with our energy costs, when we compare our cost at the Smiley campus, which is very large, to the Milburn campus, which is smaller, but does have more air-conditioned spaces, like the large auditorium we're here, that don't miss an air condition. They're about equal in terms of our energy costs. They should not be. A building that just opened in 2009 has the capability to be more energy efficient. So after getting those HVAC replacements, addressing this automation system could be a huge advantage for us. So the rough estimate is that we could save around $700,000 over twenty years, so about $25,000 to $30,000 a year for a base spend of around $250,000. Again, I'm ballparking right now. We're at very beginning phases, with a base spend of about $250,000 of investment to make those things happen. Again, at the beginning parts, we have another energy assessment that's still in process, but hopefully I'll be able to report to you on in the next couple of months. Solar is also a piece of green initiatives that we've been talking about in more detail. So we have reviewed some potential locations, should we choose to move forward with solar. At the Milburn campus, the northern field area, which we don't anticipate regardless of growth, would have any, it wouldn't be usable space for the district otherwise. The Smiley campus, as you know, we're landlocked here. We've got a whole lot of building, a whole lot of pavement. So options there, if we were to look at Smiley, could include the Pamperdome roof, the South Gym roof, the multi-purpose room roof, a carport on the Weber parking lot, a carport on the main or south parking lot. Those are, I guess, we consider a little more invasive from what I've heard at our facilities meeting, meaning that, you know, there's a roof under that solar panel if we deal with the roofs, and the roof has to be maintained. The carports, how would that affect access? They tend to be more expensive, things of the like. I have heard through our facilities meetings that the northern field at Milburn is very desirable. The others would require more discussion on whether we want to invest at that at this time. Also, solar options. So there's kind of two ways we can address this solar. On the left-hand side is a system purchase. So basically, if we do a system purchase, that means we're buying it, it's our equipment. We can get tax benefits, state incentives. We, of course, then would have full control over the project, just like we do with any of our other construction projects. That would provide us with more flexibility for future projects, because we're not locked in with an outside supplier for a period of time. And the long-term potential savings are about three times as much compared to what I'll present next, which is a power purchase agreement. Okay? So again, short-term, there's upfront cost, of course, and it's significant. Long-term, much more significant savings, but it will take a long time for us to recapture those savings. The other option would be a power purchase agreement. So those would have no or very low upfront costs. And again, these can be done with any of the scenarios that I just discussed about Milburn or the options over here at Smiley. It would give us a predetermined price for electric for fifteen to twenty-five years. We would not own it. We would not maintain it, but we wouldn't realize as much revenue from it as we would, again, about a third of what we would get long-term in the other. So there's some decisions as we go through, which I'll talk about in a moment. Our facilities assessment, our long-term facilities planning, that we will need to make in terms of what do we have to, do we have enough to invest now? Is that an appropriate priority so that we can reap those benefits farther down the line? Or do we need to capture the savings now because the money that we have available now needs to be put forth towards other items? And that will be determined then until the end of our facilities assessment, but they're things that we need to be thinking about. So master facilities planning, this was something that came up. We've always had our five-year rolling plan, that we review annually at retreat, but also ongoing through our facilities meetings. What we're looking at now is more long-term and really just kind of looking at what are our needs, what are our desires to modernize and make appropriate our facilities for educating students? And looking at more long-term approach. So you have an opportunity later on in tonight's agenda to approve a master facilities planning project that would be conducted by FGM Architects. What that would include, I'm just going to outline it very, very high level for you. We did talk about it at facilities meetings as well, but it will include things like stakeholder surveys. So we're going to ask our staff members, what is our current state? What do we need moving forward? Asking our parents, students, community members. And along with surveys, they give you some limited data. We'd also like, hopefully, before summer is out, to have an opportunity for some interviews specifically with our staff before they go on summer break. Facility tours. That means not only going to other places that have desirable facilities that maybe match that vision, for example, for the science department, but also tours of our own facility, because all of us spend amounts of time in very limited spaces, but very few of us have an idea of the entirety of our space. And our space is a challenge right now, typically on this campus, as you know, but also at the Milburn campus. The Milburn campus, we have land, but we're out of building. We have areas that are not being used for their intended purposes at both campuses. We provide different services that we did ten, twenty, fifty years ago, and our facilities need to reflect that as well. So really just understanding kind of the state of where our facilities are at. As we're planning for next year, specifically at this campus, we are truly utilizing every bit of space we have at this campus. We are, Mr. Powell's been hard-pressed to find rooms for all the things that we need to provide. I think we're making it happen for next year, but in future years, without some changes, we're in jeopardy of having to share spaces, which we did before the Milburn campus opened, or have more spaces that aren't able to be used for their intended purpose. So not having spaces available for some supplemental instruction and programming that we would have now, for example. Public engagement. So, you know, once we say, okay, what are our stakeholders interested in, we can kind of focus that a little bit. Getting our community involved too. After all, we're here to educate our community. Our community is our school and vice versa. So getting people who maybe aren't directly involved with OTHS more involved and informed of the state of our facilities and what our needs are. And then from that, establishing goals. Okay? So that would be our initial plan as we move into this process. Then FGM would take a little bit more of that lift, so they would start making that plan for our current, future spaces. They would create representations that we could visualize. Sometimes it's hard to know what something would look like for our current facilities and possible future projects. That would include some rough cost estimates and also options for where renovations may be appropriate and new builds may be appropriate. I know this isn't a news flash to anybody. We don't really have a lot of room for new builds over here, and we've been explicitly told no more concrete over at the Smiley campus as well. But we have a lot of options for Milburn, and then maybe some options to reimagine some things over at the Smiley campus. And so in that would be an evaluation. On the left, our systems, looking at things like our HVAC, our electrical, our plumbing, fire protection, our technology. And I'm not talking Chromebooks, I'm talking a technology that none of us see. And then with our structures, our roofing, windows, doors, ceilings, flooring, things of like, those more concrete things that we're interacting with every day. So FGM would review and assess that, and they're going to evaluate, what does it cost to maintain this? What long-term, what does it cost per year to maintain this? Because I think we have a lot of that out in maybe five years, but do we have that in fifteen years, this roof will need attention? In this many years, these windows will need attention? And of course, technology, we can't keep up with no matter how hard we try. And then the last piece before any findings would be presented would be a facility condition index. So they'll score the buildings, okay? They'll have replacement costs, and that will help us evaluate again even more, how much do we do to upkeep this place? What does the cost of that look like? And what is the actual function and aesthetic of that look like versus this is more well-suited with a new facility for whatever it is that ends up being in our vision? We'll look at both cost and functionality in that regard. And then FGM will present those findings to the board, to the stakeholders. We're looking at, you know, this space being filled with community members, staff members, board members, administrators, et cetera, when we get to that phase, so that we can really start to hone in on what our plans are. And the goal would be to have this assessment piece finished by December 2025. Okay? So we're right now working on a timeline, should the board wish to move forward with this. Okay? And then finally, the last thing I wanted to mention is that April is the month of the military trial, and we celebrated that here. So purple is actually the symbol of all of the branches of the military combined. And you'll see some dandelions in that third picture, which is from our IMC display. That's the April flower, because it puts roots down anywhere and blooms anywhere the winds carry it. The IMC was instrumental in making the displays, which you'll see in the first and third picture. We, of course, have three of our DODIA project directors dressed in purple on April fifteenth for purple update. As you know, DODIA and our grants that were awarded because of the military-connected status of our community. And then in second picture, our stickers that were made by our Content Creators Club for our military-connected students to pick up and display on the fifteenth. It was a sea of purple at both campuses, and it was a great day. So thanks to specifically IMC and Content Creators and to everyone who participated in it. There was great participation, and it honored our military students. And that is all I have for you.
Mr. Graham? All right. Good evening, everybody. I just have two topics to cover with everybody tonight, one pretty quick one, which is testing. The ACT was just completed, and it's the first year the ACT is back after eight or nine years of the SAT being the state-required test review. nine years of the SAT being the state-required test regers. So it is a new test this year with a new online system, but it went very well here at OTHS. So I'll share that ninth graders took the pre-ACT on March twenty-sixth over at Melbourne, and then the sophomores and juniors took the pre-ACT, ten of the ACT, on April tenth. And there's some numbers there. We had sixty-nine testing rooms, six hundred and two juniors took the ACT, which was ninety, we had ninety-seven point three percent attendance, which is awesome. We had sixteen absent who made it up. That was yesterday, actually. This is the makeup of yesterday. It went very smoothly, and I know there were certain, there were schools that had problems with the ACT on April eighth, two days before week eight. There were maybe fifteen thousand students in Illinois who couldn't finish the test because of login problems. April eighth was the first day of the test, and that's why we don't use the first day because we want to see if they can, if they have problems, they can work them out. So on April tenth, everything was good, it went smoothly. We had a couple of local districts that had problems on the eighth, but everything went smoothly on the tenth. So one thing, almost virtually every teacher, every paraprofessional, either proctoring or working the hallways, counselors were trying to clean out the classrooms throughout the day, so thank everybody for that. And then Gail Appel, it's her last year, so she's retiring as our testing coordinator. So on her last year, we got her a brand-new test, a brand-new system, but she created an awesome plan to hand off to Tiffany and Lukey, who's going to be taking that over next year, so definitely big thanks to Gail, too. So that's testing. The other thing I wanted to cover was, because tonight, the consolidated district plan is up for approval, a draft of that plan, so I wanted to share more details on what we use our title funds for, and then I just, we'll also share a slide on what our other federal funds are used for. So the first grant, our largest one, is our Title I grant. This is the current school year, so the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. This is what we use that Title I grant for. The majority of it you're going to see in the blue and the light blue is salaries and benefits. So we use Title to create smaller class sizes for students who need more support. So we call those Title English and Title Social Studies classes. So they have a smaller size, maybe eighteen students instead of twenty-five or larger. So we use title funds to pay for teacher salaries and benefits to cover those extra sections. We also use title funds to cover one of our social workers. The other largest chunk of it is professional development for teachers. That's teachers going to conferences on their content area or on bigger school issues. Administrators going to their professional development as well, so that's a big, big chunk of it. And then smaller things, we use it for internal PD presenters. So anytime we have an institute day, we do pay our teachers who present to prepare and to plan for those presentations. So that's a small chunk of it. And then we do pay for some subscriptions that are mostly out at the library so that students can access online resources and a lot of journals that they can get for research. So that's Title I. Title II is a little bit smaller and is really only in two areas. We have another teacher that's a title teacher paid for out of Title II. And then Title II is mostly professional development as well, so those are the two big chunks of that. Title I and II are kind of paying for the same types of things. That little one, the private school share of private schools that are within your district, do have to be given a certain small chunk of your Title II and IV, and so that goes to...
First Baptist.
First Baptist, yes. They get a very small chunk. And then Title IV is mostly used for advanced placement course supplies, so supplies for labs and sciences or AP art classes need a lot of supplies, so we use it for that. And we can also buy textbooks with it as well. And then the other piece is Rich's Challenge, which is a program freshmen go through that's, it's like a character building, and it's about colorblind and how to treat people. So that's a program we run every year. So that's the title grants. We also have a very small McKinney-Vento, which is a homeless grant.
Can I ask, just for my education, does every school get these three titles across the state equally or...
Your allocation is based on the percent of low-income students in your district. And so ours at twenty-four percent or around there gets us these totals, and then schools with seventy percent or more, it's their Title I schools, so they get a lot larger.
Yeah, more, so, okay.
A lot larger.
Thank you.
McKinney-Vento's grant intended to help homeless students, this was something that was actually not offered this year, and then the ROE found some, got some money from the federal government to get out to schools, so we use it for backpacks and supplies for homeless students. It was small this year, but it was a kind of a surprise grant for us.
That's the total?
That's the total, four hundred eighty-five dollars, yeah. And then the DODIA grants, I'll just briefly cover what we did this year in those four areas. Julie Kneuzen is going to present here in a minute on the CTE one, so she can share what they're doing there. In oral language, it's in the third year of that grant. This year, they had the Mandarin course that they paid for, the online platform for that. They paid for some teacher PD and tuition to get master's degrees in Spanish. They paid for some app subscriptions so teachers could have like interactive programs that they use in their class, and they paid for a program called Level Up Village, which is a, it's kind of a virtual pen pal where the students record videos of themselves and send to other schools in other countries, and then those schools send back videos. The School Culture Grant is in year two, the C3 grant. This year, they paid for Restorative Practice Professional Development, which was very well-received at our two institute days, and that'll continue over the next couple of years. We had a guest speaker in the beginning of the school year, Jared Scott, that had a school-wide assembly. We have mentoring programs going for boys and girls at both our campuses that are coming out of that grant. And then we have a new piece of the grant called the SEL Team, which really just started, which that stands for Social Emotional Learning. So that team is looking at, how can we improve our students' connectedness to the school? We gave a survey, we've got kind of an average to low rating on students saying they felt connected to the school. So that team is going to look at that survey and try to figure out what we could do to implement something to improve that. And lastly, the Pathways Grant, which was just given to us this school year, so it's in year one. So really, this year's been training for our grant director and then buying supplies for a tech lab that will launch next year, so not a lot of activity in that yet.
So quite a quick question. So DODIA's money given to us through the Department of Defense?
Yes.
What qualifies or allows our school to get access to this money?
Because of the number of military-connected students, that determines kind of the level of grant you can get. And so it's a competitive grant, you have to write an application, and they award your funding based on your numbers. So our older grants were seven hundred fifty thousand over five years, now we're down, so it's five hundred thousand over five years is our pathways, our school culture. But it's based on military-connected students.
Okay, so the survey we get each year, it's important that families disclose their military status.
The cutoff for getting that higher level is five hundred students, and we're in the four, four-sixties, I think. So we're quite there for the higher level.
Okay.
Are any of these at risk? This is all federal funding, right?
The Title Grants are written into legislation, so there's been nothing about any of those being at risk. DODIA told us to apply for next year for another one, so they are saying that they'll be hopefully being able to offer those, so we did put in an application for one to start next year.
So does it come out of the DOD or the Department of Education? I mean, it says the DOD grant.
DOD, yes. They call it the DOD Education Activity. So I think that's the same group that runs the oversight schools. And that is all I have for tonight.
Mr. Schmoll, the financial report.
So as of the end of March, we had collected ninety-one point two percent of our budget of revenue, and that's compared to ninety point six percent at the same time last this year. Around one point six million dollars was collected in the month of March, and just like it's been, the difference, again, the higher percentage is primarily due to receiving a higher percentage of our budget of local funds compared to this time last year, so we're still seeing that. We are seventy-five percent through FY twenty-five, and we have expended, as of the end of March, sixty-six percent of our budget as compared to sixty-four point five percent last year, and around three million was expended in the month of March. It's getting closer, the gap is getting closer, but we're still seeing our health life safety expenditures about seven, eight percent higher compared to this time last year. Does anybody have any questions on anything? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Powell.
Good evening, everybody. Well, tonight we're going to have a lot of good news, a lot of good stuff here. We're going to start off with our Science Olympia Competition. Last month, Dylan Cutter and Carmen Mason won first place in the State of Illinois Science Olympia Competition in Forensics. Dylan and Carmen were given a scenario and had to analyze the evidence to solve a crime. They got first place out of twenty-seventeen, so that's quite an achievement. Congratulations goes out to Dylan and Carmen. Our sponsors of the Science Olympia Team are Ms. LeBricq, Ms. Stewart, and Ms. Stammer, and they prepare these students, of course, for all these competitions, and they want to make sure that all, they know all our students did a great job, so shout out to them. FBLA, they had their state competition. OTHS had seventy-four students that participated in fifty-seven different events. Forty-one of our students placed in the top ten, twenty of our students placed in the top four, and what that is, that qualifies them for the FBLA National Competition. And of course, our FBLA leaders are Ms. Highsword, Ms. Coffle, and Ms. Hercules, and obviously do a great job as evidence buyer of results at this competition. Our band, our band competed at the University of Illinois Superstate Competition, where at this competition, it's the first time in history of OTHS that two of our bands were selected, okay? Only eight are selected, and two of those eight are from OTHS, and that's remarkable. I mean, that is remarkable. Of course, our leader, Dr. G, and the super-successful band program, we expect no less, of course, than them, so they do just a fabulous job.
It's May tenth.
May tenth, okay, there he goes.
You're all the way.
Our junior ROTC Gateway Invitational Competition was congratulations to our drill competition, the team, for taking first place overall at the two thousand twenty-five Gateway Invitational Drill Meet, which was hosted here at OTHS. Congratulations go to cadets Gallagher, Lockwood, Carroll, and Dorfner, and the entire OTHS drill team. The drill team is led by Colonel Violet and Master Sergeant Neely, who brilliantly prepare these students for competitions. Of course, retired Senior Master Sergeant Craig Bedard's a big part of that as well. He comes back weekly and helps out these students, and they did a fantastic job.
And just for you that may not know, Craig Bedard's been doing this since we formed JROTC in about two thousand and seven or so. He continues to come back, yeah.
He'd come back and volunteer himself.
He was our first non-commissioned officer.
Our robotics team, on March twenty-second, the robotics club competed at the Central Illinois Regional and earned a second-place finish. The students built a four-and-a-half-foot-tall, one hundred and twenty-five-pound robot in the span of two months. The robot has the ability to navigate using cameras, reach over six feet in the air, as well as pick things up off the ground. This was truly a team effort and well-deserved finals appearance. Our sponsor, of course, is Mr. Eric Malvik, he's the sponsor club. And also, there's a retired science teacher by the name of Mr. Curry up there that comes back all the time, and so he needs a special shout-out as well. So our robotics team did a great job. National Honor Society induction was on April eighth. There were one hundred and seventy-five new inductees this year, and there's a total of three hundred and thirty National Honor Society members between the junior and senior classes. A special thanks goes to Mrs. Ritzel, who sponsors the National Honor Society. This is a year-long process that is just, it requires an incredible amount of planning and organization. School counselors, Ms. Lukey and Mr. Hacken, were also very instrumental in the planning of this great event. And we're coming up on seniors' final days here, and it's always a great source of pride for us as a school that the seniors are about ready to graduate onto new and better things, hopefully. As we approach the end of school year, we will again be sending home a letter, which was already done, to parents on March nineteenth, and we'll again be conducting advisory period meetings with students to reinforce this pride and our expectation that every student in this class finishes on a very positive note. We'll be asking parents to work with us to encourage their students to make good choices in terms of their behavior during these final days of school. During advisory periods on May nineteenth, we will be taking our seniors directly, we will talk to them, excuse me, directly about the importance of finishing their high school experience in a manner that is reflective of their outstanding character. Ms. Lukey will come in, Dr. Coyle will come in, and myself, and talk to them about, you know, the expectations for graduation and how important it is not only for them, but for their families. And we hope we end this year on a very positive note, and of course, we have lots of faith that will happen. With that in mind, we have some very, very big dates coming up here. This coming Saturday, we have our prom at the Regent Center in O'Fallon, and of course, the after-prom is at St. Clair Bowl. On Monday night, we have our honors night at the Milburn Auditorium. The week of May fifth and May ninth is the Educator Appreciation Week, where we, of course, pay honor to our great teachers. We have a PTAC meeting on May fifth at six PM here in the Panther Center, it's on the campus. And of course, final exams are going to be May twenty-seventh, May twenty-eighth, and May twenty-ninth, and our graduations on Saturday, May thirty. Any questions?
It's Saturday, May thirty-first.
Did I mess up?
It's okay. It's just the thirty-first is Saturday. I don't want anyone to come on the wrong day.
Yes. I was thinking we have graduation practice on the thirtieth, graduation on May thirty-first. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ms. Knudsen's up here. And Ms. Knudsen's, you're talking about the CTE education and the DODIA grant?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Hi. I'm Julie Knudsen. I am the CTE Department Chair and current Director for the Creating Career Pathways Project, which is our CTE-DODIA grant. Some of the facts about CTE. We currently have fourteen full-time CTE instructors. We have nine in business, two in family consumer science, and three in industrial technology and engineering. We also share two part-time instructors with social studies and the art department. We offer forty CTE courses, twenty in business, six in family consumer science, and fourteen in industrial technology and engineering. With the addition of health science next year, we will have two additional courses in the department. We have sixteen dual-credit courses and offer over fifty credit hours for dual-credit within the department as well. Over the last five years, we've seen an overall section increase of twenty percent since twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two in our department, with over a fifty-one percent increase over the last ten years. This chart shows the courses that have increased the most over the last five years, with our top increases being in advanced video production at a hundred and eighty percent, culinary careers at one hundred percent, video production at ninety-six percent, welding technology two at ninety-five percent, and advanced applications Excel Access at eighty-two percent. In addition to the courses that are shown here, we've also seen a seven-year trend average increase in business ownership, marketing, small engine repair, and all of our drafting and engineering courses, excuse me, courses. In May of twenty twenty-two, Illinois passed HB thirty-two ninety-six, which is the PACE Framework, also referred to as the College and Career Pathway Endorsement. This requires school districts that enroll students in grades six through twelve to adopt and implement post-secondary and career expectations framework. Because of our size, we are required to have three endorsements by the time the class of twenty thirty-one. With that, we have one required this summer by July first, we have two required for the class of twenty twenty-nine, and three required for the class of twenty thirty-one. In order to obtain endorsement approval, schools must meet requirements for dual-credit or sequences, academic readiness, team-based challenges, and career exploration. Our goal, because we were required to have three and one by the end of this school year, was to have one endorsement by the end of this school year. However, we have been approved for three endorsements already in business management, construction, and drafting and engineering. Because construction and drafting and engineering are supposed to be from the same country... Because construction and drafting and engineering are supposed to be from the same pathway, we will actually need one additional endorsement by twenty-seven, twenty-eight school year. We are planning currently to work on applications in marketing and information technology, which will include our computer programming pathway, yes.
What is an endorsement?
The endorsement basically means that students meet certain requirements throughout their course of their four-year course of high school, and by the time they graduate, they can actually get an endorsement on their diploma for those career pathways.
Okay.
As Mr. Graham mentioned, we do have a Department of Defense Activity Education Activity Grant in our department as well. We were awarded a seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant in October of 2021. Ours is Creating Career Pathways. Our first goal for the Creating Career Pathways Project was the development of our CTE career academies. This provides students with direction toward college and career opportunities. We currently are, and next year when we add health science, we will have ten CTE career academies in place, and each academy is tied to the Illinois Career Pathway. As far as our industry-recognized certification, that is another focus of our DODI grant. Each academy offers students the opportunity to earn industry-recognized certification. Some of our academies actually have multiple certifications available. You can see, this is our current plan for our certifications. The pathways are listed on the left, and then the offered certifications are listed on the right. Some of those academies do have multiple certifications that are offered to students. As far as our certification success, in 2015, we actually started certifying students in our advanced applications courses in Microsoft Office Specialist and Excel and in Word. We had certified one-hundred-and-seven students between 2015 and 2019. Since the inception of our DODI grant started in 2021, we have now certified three-hundred-and-thirty-two students with a ninety percent pass rate in our certifications. This spring, we still have these certifications to come, so we expect to certify anywhere from one-hundred to one-hundred-and-fifty additional students this school year. Teachers and students are currently preparing for their certification exams, and those will take place before the end of the school year. Another component of our DODI grant is developing relationships with industry partners. Our focus has been to provide opportunities for teachers to attend site visits with industry and bringing industry leaders into the classroom to present to our students as well. You can see some of these pictures just represent those activities that have taken place over the last couple of years. In our training classes this year, we actually had two past OTHS students present for KPMG Accounting Firm as their employees, and the accounting firm has actually hired several of our past accounting students, so that partnership has been ongoing for over fifteen years. In addition, our CTE students have also experienced several field trips this year, including the St. Clair County Construction Expo, Manufacturing Day at Sway Branded City Wolf Campus, and the Future Teachers Conference at SIU Edwardsville. They've also participated in several competitions where they contest their skills against other students from around the state and the country. Our broadcast students continue to excel in these competitions, and as Mr. Howe already mentioned, our FBLA qualified twenty students from the National Conference at Anaheim, California this summer. And I, and Mrs. LaPelle, actually created FBLA in nineteen ninety-four, so I'd love to see what you're still doing here. If you don't already follow us, we're Departmental and DODI updates. Make sure to follow our pages on Facebook, and you can see all of the things that are happening within our departments. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see here, that wraps up our administrative. So that takes us to our committee reports. And the first up is Communication Committee with Ms. Johnson, she's not here, so I'll just comment on kind of what happened in the committee meeting this month. We had a meeting on April eleventh, and in the meeting, we talked a little bit about, we've had some meetings this year with our students and to kind of get feedback on, you know, how they receive communication, how they communicate with others, and some of those meetings were super enlightening, you know, but we learned a lot. But one thing I think we took away is that all the kids sitting at the table are kind of, they're student council kids that are involved in every club, that are getting straight A's, that are in AP and honors classes. So a lot of our discussion was kind of around, you know, could we have meetings during the day to try to get a broader demographic that better represents the entire student body? And then, I think, kind of walked away with discussion goals for next month's meeting to kind of talk into our annual goals and trying to work on setting KPIs, and we'll kind of get into that stuff at our next meeting on May thirteenth at 5:00 PM. Next is Education Committee, Mr. Dernbeck.
Yes, sir, we met on April the eighth. Most of the meeting was devoted to talking about the potential for e-learning days. We had a rather abnormal weather year, and I believe we did nine emergency days.
Six.
Six, well, really, it's six, okay. But, so, thanks to our administration, especially Mr. Howe, he has gone to other districts of our size and looked at those that have e-learning policies. We have to have a policy in place that is approved by the state in order for us to use an e-learning day, and since we don't have one currently, he and several department chairs, I think, are working on that. We're trying to get a feel on what our teachers would think about the potential of an e-learning day instead of a snow day. We know from COVID, it's not the most effective use of your time. And as I said, we, you know, we probably haven't had six emergency days, snow days, in the past by since COVID until this year, so it's a rather unusual thing. But we're looking into it, the administration is looking into it. We'll bring a recommendation back to the board because if the state board approves it, which would seem likely, that we would then, as a board, have to make policy, determine whether or not, you're only allowed, Dan, am I right, five?
Five.
Five e-learning days, so if you would have a year like we had in nineteen eighty-three or whatever it was, I believe, we were home from school for ten days. We didn't go for two whole weeks, and then they declared those act of God days, and you don't make them up anyway. But they're looking into that, we spent most of the time discussing what that might look like. I was very curious as to what our teachers, department chair has all felt about the whole idea, and look forward to getting that report back to the board once that's been determined, so that we can take the appropriate action to support what our teachers want. And that's about all we had, we do not have our event schedule. That was my last education committee meeting.
Yeah, we have it on the calendar for May.
Do we have it on the calendar for May?
Yeah, for May thirteenth at four, and I'm talking to Donna right now about what if she'll take your chair. She's on the committee with you, but...
Correct, correct, yeah, but May thirteenth, I will no longer be a board member, and so I probably won't be there.
Correct.
They're open.
But that's all we have.
And we talked about the exchange student as well.
We also, yeah, we also did talk about our exchange student and the policy that we have for that. We have a deal with our own local Rotary and Rotary International, and so they have always been very successful in helping us when we have exchange. We're a rather unique school, and since so many of our students are military-related, many of them have lived around the world. And so, it might be appealing to have a student from Spain come spend time with you if you happen to go to Breeze Central in the middle of Quin County. O'Fallon has had a lot of students do a lot of things, so we discussed that. We discussed why the policy exists the way it does, and at this point in time, and we sort of intend to keep it the way it is.
Next is Facilities, Mr. Ripper.
Our report is attached, however, I'd like to discuss a couple of items that aren't that clarified as far as the report is concerned. We met April the eighth. Mr. Jeff Taylor from the city of O'Fallon was present, and his reason he originally wanted to be there was for the sale of the property that we own out on Oak Hill School Road. So that was discussed, and then we've discussed it as far as the board is concerned, so we're gonna go ahead and pursue that sale. And he's doing the research as far as everything that needs to transpire on that. Then another good thing I have him there was is we were able to discuss the Smiley Bus Drop-Off and pickup situation that we have going here. So, uh... We discussed different avenues and what have you, and basically what we came up with as far as, basically, was the construction of a light at Webber Road. He thought that would be the best avenue as far as that is concerned, and that is in future plans for the city, however, that could be a long way down the road. So, that, he goes to say, that's still a problem as far as the district is concerned, and we basically have done everything we can to do, do what we can to rectify that problem. And then another guest that we have was Snyder Electric, who is basically handling our solar project. And they are present tonight as they were present last meeting. They gave us a good presentation, and the next course of action on that will be basically presented to the entire board, so you'll be seeing something in the near future on that. And then Tom, Mr. Goodrich, we've had some concern as far as storm damage, and he did an evaluation as far as potential problems that we may have. He discovered some issues with air conditioning units as far as a physical damage is concerned, but nothing so far as far as operational. So he's going to, once we get all the units up and going, and... He'll be able to evaluate that to see whether or not, what course of action we could take as far as insurance claims or what have you as far as storm damage. And that was pretty well-covered, so...
Okay, and then one last thing on facilities, with Mr. Dernbeck leaving, Mr. Isom is going to join the Facilities Committee through our reorg coming up.
And there's also another item that's not on the report that I'd like to mention, thank you. The city, first of all, it was announced two weeks ago that the city of Edwardsville is pursuing a field house. And then in the last meeting that Rob and I had with the city, which was just shortly after that, was that the city of O'Fallon has now, they've been talking about a field house for years, and they have made the announcement that they will start the initial planning for that, and we will be involved as far as the planning of the city field house as far as placement, we will say that you will need to, as far as that goes, so we'll be looking forward to that, so...
And that's it. All right, thank you, Steve, or Keith. Finance Committee is next, and we haven't had a meeting of finance, so really, I think we're waiting for the audit to come back, and then we'll have a meeting. Personnel negotiations, James?
So, we are waiting on the bids for this year's health insurance contract. Those should be coming very soon. At our reorg meeting, correct me if I'm wrong, but our reorg meeting, the intention is to, like, approve a recommendation. So be on the lookout between now and our reorg meeting for a recommendation from the Personnel Committee to the board. Obviously, you guys can disagree, whatever, but we want to give our employees as much time as possible to have a smooth transition, so we'll be doing a little pre-work before the reorg meeting.
And you're gonna give us all the documents that we'll have time to go through?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
And all the bids and kind of compare and contrast.
Yep, and the other thing I want the board to, because I want the board really think about is, I'm concerned about another high raise this year in our insurance costs, and we're always going to be fighting sort of this, looking at a year for self-insured, fully insured, and I think the only way we can really take control of our cost destiny for insurance is to move to self-insured. That might not be a decision for this year, but I think it's something we want to commit to for going to next year.
If we go to self-insured, then we have a pot of money, if you will, just as a catastrophic cap. I mean, it seems like we need to have some sort of a, if we're self-insuring, we need to have an insurance pot just in case.
Yeah, and, yeah, so we'd have an insurance pot, we'd pay, well, we probably would, we would be self-insured, but what we'd probably do is we'd go on a group of self-insured people, and they would have the pot of money that we pull from, but we'd pay essentially a percentage of our claims into that pot, and then we would purchase stop-loss insurance, right? So, you know, we could purchase stop-loss insurance on individual claims, we could purchase stop-loss on aggregate claims, we could do both, right? Which probably we'd do both. And so we'd have a pot of money with it insured on the money. But I think that's something that I just don't think we will ever get these costs under control unless we go into self-insurance and really talk about, you know, networks, services, all of those things, where we're in control of those things.
What would the difference be to our employees if we go to self-insured?
It's really, so a lot of large employers and medium-sized employers are actually self-insured. So for the employee, it's really the same experience, right? It's not gonna be an OTHS insurance card, it's gonna be Anthem, it's gonna be United, it's gonna be Blue Cross, right? It's gonna be, it's gonna look just like their other insurance. The claims administrator will also be a third-party administrator. It's gonna function just like that, too. So it's not, as in experience, it's not going to change, right? The bills don't come from the school, it's not gonna be coming from the central office. Beck isn't gonna be sending out medical bills, not yet at least.
Providers also, it's the same.
Well, when you're self-insured, you pick, right? So you pick, so, you know, some self-insured plans around here, I think Bellevue's one of them, they opened up a clinic essentially and said, hey, here's our primary care clinic, right? You could, we wouldn't have to open up a clinic, but we could make deals with BJC, with SSM, HSHS, or a number of other doctors to give preference to our members. And so, that's part of the advantage. The other part of the advantage is really on the pharmacy side. So, right now, the world of pharmaceutical benefits, and I was actually having this conversation there with someone else, the world of pharmaceutical benefits in the United States is just broken. Not just for OTHS, but for everyone, it's broken, right? There's these middlemen, there's these rebates, the manufacturers do things, there's all these things. But when you're in a fully insured plan, right? The insurer of that plan basically takes all the rebates, all the manufacturing, it doesn't get passed on to us, right? But if we were a self-insured plan, those rebates, those discounts, those sort of differences in prices, we would recoup some of those rebates lower in our pharmaceutical costs, right? And we could sort of do a couple of things with that reward. We could try and keep premium costs flat, so we could just basically return it to the member, right? We could try to reduce costs, we could try to increase benefits, right? There's things we could do with that. Now, with all that said, to get those pharmacy benefits managers, sorry for the lecture, everyone, to get those pharmacy benefit things, we would do like a PBM, pharmacy benefits manager. And that's a dirty business, it's a dirty business, and we really have to make sure that we've got the right one in line with the right structure and the right price transparency for us, too. So I think, for me, this is probably not something I'd recommend going self-insured in this cycle, but it's something that as soon as we sign with a fully insured, I think I'm gonna recommend, or I'm gonna advocate for on this board, that we start just planning on self-insured in the next cycle, just take control of the costs.
It is gonna take some planning, right? It is very complex, and it is gonna take some planning. I just want to make sure that, as a board, it's financially best for the board, but it also doesn't come on the backside. but it also doesn't come on the backs of our employees and our members. I mean, we've, we've just got to provide that.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, yeah, we don't want to, what, what I'm more concerned about is the cost of premiums increasing. That's my biggest concern, getting that under control. I think we would have more control over that in a self-insured environment.
Yeah, and this is an important discussion, obviously. It's a big cost for us, this is a school. You know, for those big cost buckets, we should be looking at them every year and, you know, trying to figure out the best budget. Special committees, I'm sorry, policy, Mr. Leview.
So for the policy committee, you have eight policies on second reading. We did not have a meeting this month because there were no press updates. However, there are a lot of press updates for the next one. So our next policy meeting on the sixth of May at 4:00 PM, we're going to have a number of policies to go over because there was a big press release. I did sit down and thank you, Dr. Shackelford, for showing me the audit that we have that basically checks compliance on all of the policies that are, that are, that we have. What it doesn't do is look at the OTHS specific stuff. So we're, in our next policy meeting, we'll go through OTHS specific requirements and see how we can put it, roll that into the compliance audit. I think you just closed out for this year, or you're closing out soon for this year. So then in the policy committee, we'll look and see how can we do it for next year to check the compliance. I remember last year we went through and made sure all of our policies were updated with our compliance, which is tucking to make sure we're following our policies. And that's our goal for, for next year in the policy committee. Our next policy meeting again, sixth May at 4:00 PM. I did want to touch on the IASB talking points with the new board members coming, with at least one. And I know we're going to have to fill our other vacancies there. The IASB has redone their webpage for training. It's actually really good. I've gone out and done a number of trainings there as Karen knows, because I've given her my certificates. But that's really good. I'll, I'll commend it to the other board members too. It's really easy to use, easy to get through. The joint annual conference, a few months away, but they're going to open the registration on June 2nd. And they did give us a heads up, IASB did a large press release in April, which I think we've already, we've already received, right? The Southwest Division meeting is June 4th, 6:00 PM in Fletcher's. And that's when there will be the election of the division officers. And we're going to discuss the division engagement and future meetings and how to get more of the board members involved in that. And special committee, I just had PTAC conversations over coffee. It's PTAC coming up in the formal one on five May, six to seven here at Smiley. There is a parent survey in People's email, I think it went out today, because I think I got it. So the parent survey, this is the one where we, we asked for input from the parents from the, on what, what we're going to talk about. I'll get that together, so. That is all that we have.
Perfect, thank you. That takes us to special committees and the, the other special committees. Donna's involved with, I'll give a real brief update on some of those. We've got the best committee, which recently most of our board members went to. But we had a, a, pretty much a citywide retreat, which hasn't happened in a long time. It was pretty cool. Our high school was there, District 90 was there, Central was there, Shiloh, the city of O'Fallon, the city of Shiloh. So it was, it was pretty well attended across our community, which is really what the purpose of best is, is to kind of bring the broader community that falls under this high school district's umbrella. So in the retreat, we really focused on Vision 2030 and the goals of Vision 2030. But we set up roundtable discussions where we kind of got to talk about best practices across the different districts. And we were able to do a little brainstorming, you know, and think about ways to improve all of our schools collectively. But at the same time, I think we were sitting with a lot of other school board members from a lot of other districts. We, it was, it was great relationship building, I thought. And I think the main feedback from everybody in attendance is that, that we'd like to participate in this again. Just we, we kind of want to make it an annual event every year. So hopefully the momentum stays behind that. I feel, it felt like it would, and I think a lot of good things came out of it. The takeaways from the meeting, I think the superintendents most likely have those and are probably organizing those and figuring out how to build those into the district plans. The other special committee, as Keith mentioned already a little bit, was city council. We talked a little bit about the field house and the city's interest in creating a field house, possibly out at the sports park. But they also talked about, District 90 and 203, we talked a little bit about changes in, you know, demographic changes within our schools. How the building and facility requirements have changed over the last 20 years and as well as finance adequacy, like the money that we receive from local tax base and the state. You know, I think a lot of people have assumptions on what that stuff looks like and, and not a reality of what that stuff looks like. So we, I think we opened a lot of eyes with the city council, and it was a good discussion. And I think that should carry forward. The library was also discussed. The director of the library is working on building a new facility kind of north on Seven Hills Road. And that possibly leaves a building empty, you know, down the old library. If, I think District 90's looking at it. I think they're not sure if they could utilize it or not.
They can beat us to it.
Well, they, they have some concerns with being able to utilize it. But, you know, it could be an opportunity for us. So we should consider it, I think. That's, that, that's it for committees. Comments from our visitors? Were there any written communications for the board? Public comment at this time? Is there anybody in the public that would like to address the school board? Okay, well, that takes us to our consent agenda. So make a motion to approve the consent agenda items in their entirety, including but not limited to prior meeting minutes, financial reports, payment of bills, Freedom of Information Act requests, and disposal of obsolete equipment.
So, second.
Roll call.
Eisen, Richter, Leview, Huff, Dernbeck, I, Brown.
Aye. Old business is next. We've got a motion to approve board policies as presented.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes. New business, we've got our personnel sheet. So make a motion to approve the appointment, compensation, discipline, performance dismissal of personnel items as presented.
So move.
Roll call.
Eisen, Richter, Leview, Huff, Dernbeck, I, Brown.
Aye. And before we move on, I think Dr. Shackelford would like to make an announcement.
So in the personnel that was just approved, we do have two new members of the administration joining us next year. And they're both here tonight. So first is Ms. Chalita Gray, will become our Director of Finance and Operations. So just want to say. And Mr. Alex Pringle, fresh from the lacrosse game. Thank you for coming by, will be joining us.
Next, we have a motion to approve the honorable dismissal of an interpreter.
So move. Second.
Roll call.
Eisen, Richter, aye. Leview, aye. Huff, aye. Dernbeck, I, Brown.
Aye. A motion to approve the pay applications for construction projects.
So move. Second.
Roll call.
Eisen, Richter, aye. Leview, aye. Huff, aye. Dernbeck, I, Brown.
Aye. Motion to approve up to 200,000 for FGM Architects to complete a comprehensive facility assessment.
So move. Second.
Is there any discussion that anybody would like to have on this?
I think it's needed.
I think it's definitely needed.
Okay, with that, roll call.
Eisen, Richter, aye. Leview, aye. Huff, aye. Dernbeck, I, Brown.
Aye. 9.5, this trips in excess of 200 miles, and they're, they're working on it. So we're going to table that one in the next. A motion to approve school fees for the 25-26 school year.
So move. Second.
And before we vote on this, Dr. Shackelford, could you comment on whether there were increases? If there were, how much?
There were no increases. It will be exactly as the same as less this year.
Okay, so roll call.
Eisen, Richter, aye. Leview, aye. Huff, aye. Dernbeck, I, Brown.
Aye. A motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between O'Fallon Township High School, District 203, Board of Education, and the O'Fallon Federation of Teachers regarding the Family Beregment Leave Act. Using prior roll call.
Second.
All approve?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Got a motion to approve the consolidated district plan that aligns the federal funding requirements for Title I, Title II, Title IV, and IDF.
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All any opposed? Motion passes. A motion to approve the amended OTHS public school calendar for the 25-26 school year, using prior roll call.
So move.
Second.
And before we vote on this one, could you explain why?
The only, the only change is removing an early release date that was originally scheduled for January 28th and adding one for March 4th. This came at the request of Gail LaPelle, our assessment coordinator, because there's training for proctors that has to take place prior to testing. This year, we tried to put it in a full institute day, but anyone who was missing that day, then there was difficulty getting them scheduled, and our proctors had to be prepared. So moving that early release to March 4th will give us another afternoon for proctor training for state testing.
So she recommended it, and she's not doing it next year, so.
Well, she recommended in concert, in concert with Tiffany, who will be taking her spot. Yes, yes. So it doesn't change the actual attendance stage, it just changes early release. Yeah, yeah.
All right, so all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. A motion to approve Mary Matthews Smiley as the, in Smiley as the additional OTHS authorized agent for employment certificates for 24-25 and 25-26, using prior roll call.
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Our health insurance is a discussion.
I just had a couple of updates. I know James shared kind of conceptually what's going on. We are still waiting on our renewal. In February, we did have Assured Partners out for our institute day to provide some in-service for interested members. The, we, we're discussing the possibility of a shift in renewal dates. Right now, we do our open enrollment in June for July 1 implementation. We're looking at what it may look like if we move that to a calendar year with December open enrollment. With January, that would either extend a year, a coverage year by six months, extending it to 18 months, or we'd have a very short year of six months. Not sure what that'll look like in terms of renewals. Last year, our medical loss ratio, so our, our claims are what drives our cost primarily, right? Was at 96.1% of expected. So it was healthier than it had been. And last year, we had a 5% increase. We did have an insurance committee meeting several weeks ago. And to date, this year, our medical loss ratio was over 100% at 104.6%, which is not as encouraging for getting a healthy renewal, because we're, we're overusing. I shouldn't say we're overusing. Our members are, are using more insurance than what was anticipated, okay?
Did they lower the estimate when we went down last year?
They have, so they have these, they project, they project out, right? And so they say, we get X amount of premiums with our profit margins, we should get X dollars. So, so a fully insured plan. And so you always want people to go 100% because they'll, that means that they're making money off your group, right? But when you're over 100%, and we've been over 100% except for last year, I think for the last five years, which means we break their model every single year.
So last year was the anomaly. It's not that they lowered our target.
Unfortunately, it was, yeah.
So we're still waiting to see where they come in. So, you know, Signal will come in first, that's who we have currently. And then they'll get some comps, and then a negotiation process goes through. But we have our next insurance committee meeting in the coming weeks. And then hope to, at the special board meeting, like James mentioned, be able to have a recommendation for the board so that our employees have time, our nine-month employees particularly, have time to review, understand, ask questions about the plan before they go on summer break after the 29th.
And, and one discussion that did happen at the retreat was, is insurance something that can be talked about across the city? The cities, the school districts, you know, and make it a bigger, broader opportunity, I guess.
I think that, and I think that's a great idea. The problem is our pool is, is not, it's the bad pool. It's the bad pool, you want to admit, not the bad pool, that's, but our pool's an expensive pool, right? And so, so there's some documents that you'll see in the executive center, but some of the variance from the norm. Our pharmacy spend is 60% at the wrong direction, variance from norm of the other, other pools, right? So it's, it's really tough. We, we want to, like, we want to mix with other pools, because we'd like to get a less riskier pool and then get that, that with lower costs for us. But fortunately, that could raise costs for the other pool. And that's, we're going to be in that catch 22, I think, for a while.
And that was more data that was presented to us at our last insurance committee meeting, what he's referencing right now.
Yeah.
What they shared today.
This is posted, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah. So that's all we have for now. It'll, should start doing quickly.
Okay, all right, thank you. And the last item we have is, we're just going to table at this time, because I think we're waiting for Friday. So I'll have to come back. So with that, we're pretty well wrapped. Is there any other business board members would like to present or discuss?
I'd just like to say we'll miss Steve.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you. All right, our next board meeting is May 22nd. May, yeah, May 22nd. And we hope to be discussing our student handbook, our health insurance renewal, and, and an amended budget. Some of the important dates that I think Mr. Howell already hit on his prom. We've got on the 26th, honors night, 28th, and PTAC coming up on May 5th. So with that, a motion to adjourn the regular meeting of Board of Education.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
You adjourn.